I think we can get started here. As people come in, hopefully they'll be able to follow along. Welcome to everyone who's joining tonight. My name's Matt Oldenburg. I'm the zoning administrator for Save Galena. And tonight is Wednesday, December 30th. It's now 6:34 PM and we'll call the neighborhood meeting to order for the St. Mary's School Planned Unit Development Request. And just a little bit about the process tonight. Tonight is considered a neighborhood meeting, which is a provision in our code do for the purpose of allowing an applicant and the public to have a chance to have a discussion about the various aspects of the proposal and to maybe alleviate concerns or have some further discussion without the pressures of a public hearing so that we can have a better understanding ultimately of what is proposed and have a better understanding on both sides of the request. Some housekeeping rules before we get started. This is a Zoom format. If you're unfamiliar with Zoom, we will keep your video off until it's time when you would like to speak and if when it is time to speak or you want to speak, there's a raise hand feature. I believe you can click on your own name and there should be an option to raise hand or it may be on your screen depending on what devices you're using. If you, if all else fails and you really want to speak, I'll give you a little bit of time after each subject. You can unmute yourself and I'll try to get you in so you can speak. Also, when it's your time to speak tonight, if you could please state your name and your address, that way we can make sure we get it on the record. This will be recorded tonight and we will try to provide a written document that also describes what we discussed tonight as well. And that'll be available on our website. Having said that, I'm going to go over the agenda really quick. First, after I'm done speaking, we'll have a presentation by the applicants and they will describe what is happening with their proposal and what their vision is for this request. And after they've completed that, we'll go into a public comment session. This will be a charrette style format where we have certain points of discussion and we'll give the public an opportunity to ask questions based off of the agenda items. The agenda can be found on our website at cityofgalena.org. Under the agendas and minutes and the zoning board of appeals section, you'll find the agenda topics there. We will allow the public to speak and then we will allow the applicant to be able to provide discussion on that topic and then we will move on. Points of etiquette, we want to have a good, friendly and respectful meeting tonight. Hopefully we can come to understandings amongst all of our questions. And if something starts to drag on or becomes redundant, we'll, we'll try to make sure we keep it moving and but we do want to make sure that everybody is, is heard and, and is able to speak. So if it is something that has been discussed at length, we'll, we'll ask you to just say that you agree with that point and then we'll try to move on if you want to add any other points of discussion. We'll go on from there. After we make it through that part of the meeting tonight, I'll give you some closing remarks again and we can adjourn. The process of where we're at now, the applicant has come forth with a preliminary planned unit development request. And that meeting was held on December 9th before the zoning board of appeals and the applicant requested a continuance at that public hearing. So nothing was discussed after that point. And the applicant approached the city if we could do a neighborhood meeting so we could talk about this tonight and give the neighbors and any interested parties an opportunity to, to get this better understanding. The continuance will be scheduled at the January 13th Zone Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, which is a Wednesday night at 6:30 PM. And we will resume the, the public hearing for this preliminary phase of the request. This preliminary phase is to establish the planned unit development district, which is a underlying high density residential district. And we will look at the merits of the, the, the density and the site planning and things like that at this phase. If after the hearing is closed, the public, the zoning board will have a discussion about the item and then come up with a recommendation that will be sent to the city council and then it will go to the city council for their discussion and possible action. If it passes through the city council, then there will be a design phase on the applicant's behalf and they will come back to the city at some point with a final planned unit development plan. And that will be another public hearing held with the zoning board of appeals at a later date. And so that will be a final review of what the building and the site actually look like and final design. And if that gets approved by the zoning board of appeals, then they go into further process with building permitting. One additional aspect of the process is that they will also need to go before the historic preservation commission for review for historic appropriateness with the, you know, style and design of the site and the structures. I think that covered most of it and I'm going to move next onto presentation by the applicants. And so, John, did you want to speak first?
Hey, John, can I say one thing before you start? I just wanted to tell, you know, our fellow Galenians that we, I apologize for not having, not having done the, the neighborhood meeting ahead of the previous zoning board submission. And the reason that happened was quickly is that looking at the schedule of when applications for tax credits have to be submitted, there's a critical component in this project for funding through historic preservation tax credits and through the state. And there's some criteria there that we, we want to try and meet in order to get the tax credits. And that is that the, that the city will own the building for at least six months. And we were, we were under the impression that the city would not take control of that building until sometime in probably in February. Well, it turns out the city is amenable to, to taking the building before that, which sort of gave us a little bit of breathing room. Because our preference would have been to have a community meeting first and then go to the board. But because of the applications for deadlines, where we're running up against those, we felt like we had to try to get in front of the, the the board as soon as possible. So anyway, that's why we're, we're delayed. It's, it's a better solution for us to have everyone weigh in on this and then go forward with our supplemental. So I just wanted to make that clear. So go ahead, John.
Oh, let me unmute John here. There you go, John.
All right. Thanks, everyone. So my name is John David Schofer. I'm vice president with Economic Growth Corporation. We are based out of Rock Island and we're an organization that started over 35 years ago where we actually just started with rehabilitation of one single family home a year. And so we did that for gosh, I think 10 to 15 years. And then when my boss was hired on, that's when we started to expand more into the multifamily realm, especially in our hometown of Rock Island. You know, there was significant need for mixed income housing downtown Rock Island, especially with, you know, older dilapidated historic buildings. And so that's kind of when our multifamily development arm really started. And since then, we've, we've kind of grown into other areas too. So we as an organization, we also have four HUD approved housing counselors on staff where we actually provide financial education and financial literacy training to help people with pre-purchase counseling, post-purchase counseling. You know, foreclosure prevention, things of that nature. And then we, we also have our single family rehabilitation and home accessibility programs for homeowners who are at or below 80% AMI, we're actually able to come in and provide you with, you know, code upgrades, whether that be roofing, electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, new windows, potentially new flooring, things of that nature. So then people who, you know, may not have the, the means to make these improvements, you know, can work with us to get those improvements made. So then they aren't removed from their home. So we've been operating those programs for over 15 years now. And then we also have a CDFI that, that we're affiliated with. It's called Bridge Investment. And we're able to actually provide micro loans to, to businesses and business owners, particularly those in downtown areas, kind of like in Galena. You know, whether you're growing or expanding your business or we need help buying equipment or expanding your inventory, you know, that's one of the entities that we have kind of under our arsenal as well. So when it comes to housing, you know, we really have the full gamut of, of tools to assist people. So then they have an affordable place to live and, and I guess moving into kind of projects like the one that's proposed, you know, a lot of the projects that, that we've completed are redevelopment projects that involve historic tax credits, you know, similar to the St. Mary's piece. And actually, most recently, it was actually our first tax credit project back in 2004. And when you utilize these credits, sometimes you have a 15 year compliance period. And one of the things that we did was when the limited partner was exiting the transaction, we actually negotiated through the Illinois Housing Development Authority to work with us to provide a million dollars in improvements to the building, just because it's very important to the downtown area. It's 52 units in Rock Island. And, you know, we wanted to make sure that that building was, you know, not only attractive to the appropriate tenants, but you know, it was a staple within our community. And so we, we always look to reinvest within our projects. And, you know, we definitely think that we do have a niche with redevelopment buildings. And one of the things that we're doing right now is the former Shimer College campus in Mount Carroll, so not too far from, from where you guys are. And you know, that project is a multi-phased approach. We're currently in the closing process of phase one and here in about a month, we'll be submitting an application for phase two in that project. And so we work very closely with IDA. You know, a lot of our projects are Illinois based. We are expanding into other areas too. And so that kind of brings us to this project here. You know, we had a really good experience with developing the Coatsworth Building downtown Galena. I think that was probably five or six years ago. And, you know, the city was, was great to work with and we work a lot with Landmark Illinois and we actually saw the, the St. Mary's School listed on, on one of their reports for, for buildings that were in dire need of redevelopment. And so after talking to to Jim about it, knowing that he's in Galena, we kind of talked a little bit more about the Galena market, what was going on. And one of the things that came up was the need for quality, affordable housing in Galena because so many of these former rentals were being turned into Airbnb. And Airbnb is obviously a very attractive business momma right now, especially in the Galena area. But you know, a lot of these service workers need a place to live. And so we then looked at, you know, redeveloping the, the St. Mary's building and you know, while that does qualify for the necessary credits, you know, when you only do 11 units, it kind of makes it difficult for a nonprofit developer like us to come in because there are economies of scale that we have to follow. And so that's when we looked at the new construction piece that's tied to it was to basically get to a unit count that, that kind of makes it so that it's a little bit easier for us to, to get a deal done. And then for IDA, which is Illinois Housing Authority, to get them to approve a project of this magnitude. And so when we are applying for, for funds, you know, we kind of have to look at the different sources of funds that are in the capital stack. And that's why we, we worked with Jim and others to kind of put together a, a unit count and 35 was, was what we came to. We didn't want to go too big just because of, I guess, the location of where it was. We wanted to be respectful of the neighborhood. But, you know, we, we did want to address the, I guess, the, the lack of rental housing that's starting to take place. And so we now have, you know, plan a place where we'll work towards achieving those historic credits. We'll work very closely with Illinois SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office. And while we're doing that, we've actually already had initial dialogue with IDA, just to make sure that this is a project that they'd be interested in funding. And so while we, as Jim alluded to, we did have a plan to speak in December. And then we kind of found out a little more detail about the trajectory of the project moving forward. And we thought it'd be very important to include members of the community to hear, you know, I guess what they would like to see and try to find a way where, you know, we're able to work together and make sure we have something that, that fits within the desire of the community.
So I'm going to go ahead and talk about the project a little bit. But the first thing I want to say, I I have, this is, this would be my third project working with economic growth. And the first one was working on the Coatsworth Building. And when they told me they had bought the Coatsworth Building and were redeveloping it, I was a little surprised because I knew that problem, that, that project had some economic challenges. And, and I was impressed that they were doing it and I, and I found out that they were a nonprofit community-based developer. It made more sense to me as why they were doing it because a normal sort of for-profit typical developer wouldn't, wouldn't come close to a building like that and won't even touch it. And then that same thing kind of happened down in Mount Carroll during the, the Shimer project where again, I mean, the, 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 the construction costs of these historic buildings to renovate them in accordance with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines in order to get the tax credits, the, the costs are, are almost astronomical. And the only way it can be done is through these tax credit programs and creative creatively financing them. Because the, the amount of rent that you can charge per one of these units will never come close to covering the amount of money that you had to put into it. So I think that's the, that's the advantage. Economic growth is frequently referred to as the developer of last resort because they look at these projects in a completely different way. So when St. Mary's came up, it seemed to be a perfect fit for the same reason. Their, you know, their priority is community-based developing. So they're, they're trying to help build, build up the community. You know, not at other people's expense. So, so we looked at, at St. Mary's and realized that existing building will be very expensive to, to restore and rehabilitate because of the, of the Secretary of Interior's guidelines. And, 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 and those guidelines are correct. I mean, when you're, when you're doing historic preservation, you should be doing it, you should be doing it the right way. But the right way happens to cost a heck of a lot more money than normal projects. And that's why the, the new building becomes critical to this so that the new building construction on a unit, per unit basis is going to be significantly lower than the, 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 the construction cost of the, of the new bill or the older building. So that's why the two of them go together. And it turns out when we started really looking at the site, the way St. Mary's is kind of laid in there right behind, you know, the school's laid in just up behind the church. There's a nice little extension like a bench at that location. And that bench is relatively flat. But the, the most important thing is that it's nestled very nicely in a, in an area well below the people up on Elk Street who live on Elk Street and then, and, and, and well above the people who live down on Franklin. And so I want to show that because I think that's an important thing for people to see. So let me share my screen a second here. Can you see my screen? No, can you see my screen now?
We're getting there, Jim. Yep.
Okay. Um, so these are the, the preliminary plans that we created that show, you know, the extension of, of, of High Street up to Elk. This extension, we, we, talking to the city, there's a, a desire for this extension. And part of it is a, is a, and Matt may be able to test this, a sort of a life safety component of this where if we're going to have any kind of multifamily housing up here, we want to make sure that we can get fire trucks to that location. So that's one of the reasons that, that High Street's being extended. You can see that St. Mary's is here on a kind of a long skinny property, which is very wooded. And then across High Street, we have this relatively flat, very nice bench that sits, and I'm going to go to the next slide so you can see it. But that, that level of that bench, if you see where my mouse is, is right there. Okay. And so we're setting the first floor of the building at the, at the level of that bench that exists. And so when you add the typical floor to floor heights in a building like this, and then you have some mechanical screening and things like that, it turns out that when you look at the height of the building, total height of the building relative to the first floors, the average first floors up on Elk Street, because those, those, those buildings are elevated, that the top of our building is somewhere between 17 and 24 feet below the, the floor lines of the buildings up above. And so it, it actually fits in here very nicely without blocking anyone's views and without, without overpowering anybody because we're sort of, we're really nestled in a, in a nice little area in between everyone. I want to show also a 3D model that I've done. This is, this is a modeling that I created at the very beginning. I will, I want to stress that the architecture is, is, is not meant to be representative of, of what's going to be ultimately built. The building really has not been designed yet. The reason I'm showing something here is because we know through our experience that a, a building that has 20, you know, 25 or 24 units in it and that are one bedrooms, the building's going to be a certain size. There's a bulk. You know, a one bedroom unit takes up approximately, you know, 22 to 24 feet along the exterior wall. If you have five units, you get that, that's how long the building's going to be. You multiply that by the number of stories and you get a, you get a, a, a building of a certain size. Not necessarily going to be articulated the way I'm showing it. But, and then although it will be a highly articulated building, I think that's, you know, that's, that's one of the things that we want to do. This is not going to be like a vinyl box sitting on the site. So, but, but just know that at this point, we still have to go through an entire design process for the building itself. That will, then we will go in front of the historic commission to get approval from them. But the idea is to show how, of course, here is St. Mary's, the church on the corner. And then here's the St. Mary's School right here. The idea is to show how the building kind of nestles in and you can kind of see it here. And this, this is real topography from the GIS office modeled. So this is exactly the, where these buildings are. And we went out and we, we measured and drew, and drew the buildings around, not measured, but we took photos and then we do a certain method with photos and with a story pole so we can kind of recreate the, the masking of the existing buildings around so we can get their sizes pretty close. But you'll see that how that building kind of sets in there well below the people up on Elk. Now, there were some mention, and again, this is preliminary, that maybe it should have a sloped roof on it. And that may be so. I had chosen with this, even though we're in the preliminary phases, to keep it flat because I didn't want to have the, 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 the building to be any more elevated than it needs to be in order to preserve, you know, people's view sheds from, from behind the building. Again, you can see the, the difference in elevation change here. We're quite low. If we do a slope roof, that will encroach on that a little bit, maybe not enough to make too much of a difference, but it will, a little. And so what we have then is the other thing that is allowing us to, you know, create only a two-story profile from, on that bench from, from the side is that from the back, we're able to dig out a little bit and do a walkout basement. So whereas these two, two, upper two floors would be double loaded corridors with units facing both sides. As you can see, there's some on that side. And then there are some on this side that allow us to put some additional units in the lower level in the basement. That'll be fully walkout. We then have, you know, then the, the, there's parking, parking lot in here in front. I think there's 11 cars in that lot. And then we have, you know, the St. Mary's building with parking on the street. And then a little bit more parking over here. And then there's a little tiny lot of, of piece across the street where we're going to park some cars as well. The idea was to provide at least one parking space. This is per, per the zoning ordinance, provide one parking space per unit. And then have one parking space for the onsite manager. And John can talk about that. There will be a person who will be a, there'll be an office in this building. One of the two, I'm not sure which one yet. There will be an office in this building or between the two buildings where Economic Growth will have a staff person taking care of the, the property. John, you want to elaborate on that a little bit more perhaps?
Yeah. So given the, the programs that, that we utilize to get the funding, we actually go under a very strict property management compliance. And so that means every year we have to do annual certifications of people's income. You know, we, we like to have people onsite for the, the buildings and typically, you know, something of this size would require an onsite manager. So we will have someone there who's available to, you know, obviously answer any calls for any emergencies and then also to work with, you know, the respective tenants for, for any issues that they may have. And so as Jim said, we're not sure which building the property manager would be in, but you know, they, they will be there. They will go through the the rigorous training that is needed to be a property manager within our industry. You know, there's fair housing that they have to go through every single year. And, you know, our, our director of property management actually is in the office next door to me. And so we talk quite a bit about what is needed and, and, you know, the potential tenants that are there. We do a very in-depth review of the applicants, you know, whether it's background check and, you know, like I said, the, the income certifications because our project here, what we're looking to do is we're looking to target the service workers who work downtown. And so, you know, what we're kind of looking at is, is this project being one bedroom, which is why the, the amount of parking spaces work. And, you know, we aren't sure if everyone's going to have a car. We do see a lot in our downtown units in Rock Island that some of the folks that live in our buildings do not have a car. But when you have, you know, one, one bedroom units and all yours, which is what we're proposing here, we're not seeing anything more than one car per space. And so these tenants, you know, if it's a one-person household, they have to be at or below $32,000 of income per year. And if it's a single parent, for example, that number is 236,600. And so that would more than likely fit the criteria of a, of a service worker working downtown. You know, before tips or anything. And then if it is a, a single parent with two children, that number actually bumps up to 41,000. So we're looking to provide, you know, quality, affordable housing to, you know, your community while, you know, looking to target those service workers who are downtown.
So, so we do have one space per unit. And then we have three additional spaces because we have one space per unit, one space then for the property manager. And then there would be three additional spaces for, for visitors. And, and so that's, you know, but I, I think by the ordinance, we're, we're supposed to have just one per space. I don't think there's any, there's a need for any additional, the, the three additional spaces, but we were showing them at this point. So and that's something that, you know, if, if someone says, you know, it'd be better if we had just the one per space and, and the one for the property manager and not the other three, then you know, we would still comply with the zoning ordinance if we didn't have to do that. So I don't think there's anything else I, I can add other than I need to stress that, you know, we still need to go through the, the, the process of architectural design. And, you know, that's a, that's a pretty arduous task. The other thing I would say in general. is that these are, these are, these are very difficult projects to do. They're, they're incredibly time-consuming. There are so many moving parts with different funding sources and different deadlines and information that has to be created to, to, you know, submit for certain deadlines. This whole process will take, even if we were to start here within the next two months, you, you know, there's, we're not going to, I mean, we're just gonna tell you straight that people won't be, wouldn't be able to move into these buildings until, until the middle to the end of 2023. That's how long this will take. It's a, it's a very, very arduous process. And that's why a lot of, a lot of, you know, standard developers won't go through it. And, and so I think, in my estimation, I think that this, this is, you know, a really good chance for St. Mary's to, you know, to, to finally be preserved and, and, and with, with a, with a group that has the right attitude about developing.
Okay, thank you, John. Do you have anything else you wanted to add, Jim or, or John?
No, I think, you know, if people have any questions or comments, I can look to try to answer that to the best of my ability.
Okay. For those of, those of you joining us who maybe didn't make it in time for my instructions at the beginning, the format that we're doing tonight is kind of a charrette style. This is a neighborhood meeting, not a, a public hearing. We want to make sure that you have the opportunity to have a discussion with the applicant here to have a better understanding of what they're proposing. The agenda for our public comment section of tonight can be found on our website at cityofgalena.org under agendas and minutes, and then again, under zoning board of appeals. There's a link to the agenda tonight. What we'll do is I'm going to start out with the topics. I'll ask if anybody has any questions about that certain topic, and then if you could raise your hand on the Zoom app, please. We will make sure that you have a chance to talk. We'll turn your video on, we'll turn your sound on, and you can go. I will also give a little bit of pause. If anybody is unable to figure out how to raise your hand on the Zoom app, we'll let you unmute yourself so you can let us know that you would like to speak, and we'll take it from there. So if that sounds good to everybody, we'll move into public comments. And the first topic of discussion is residential density. And in the zoning world, we look at a land use by its density. And in terms of residential uses, that's measured by how many dwelling units there are per acre. A dwelling unit would consist of one unit that somebody could live in, such as a single-family dwelling would be a normal house. That would be one dwelling unit. A duplex would be two dwelling units, and so on. And we measure that against how many acres there are to come up with some sort of a, a density formula for development. The applicant is requesting this current zoning to be changed into a planned unit development. The old zoning was low-density residential, which is, I think it's like six dwelling units per acre density. And they're wanting to go to a high-density residential unit, which is sixteen dwelling units per acre normally. The application tonight would be thirty-five units on point nine-three acres, so we're looking at a thirty-eight dwelling units per acre density. So does anybody have comments about the level of density that the applicant is requesting, and they'd like to make comments? I see one hand. If you want to raise your hand, we'll make sure that you have a chance to provide your comments, and you can have a discussion with the applicant. I'm first gonna go with, I think it's Diana, Diana Pitstick. I'm going to turn your video on and unmute you. All right, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
And I don't know why my video shut off. It's on a default from doing Zoom classes. Hi. My comment is that that change to higher density would put it at two-point-three-five times the usual density for that area, two-point-three-five, so almost two and a half times higher. While we, a lot of us support housing for low-income workers, and, you know, many of us may hit that, that category ourselves soon or whenever. You never know what's gonna happen. It seems like it's such a high volume of density in such a compact area that perhaps a slightly smaller density, not quite so extreme density, would be in order. I know that the proposals and stuff, you're gonna talk about traffic and street things like that, but the traffic and stuff boosts that density up too. That density is just gonna be overwhelming for the area. So those are the big issues there, and some of the zoning setbacks, which again, you've got is lists for, for additional topics. I sent you my one letter. That was like three pages long, so hopefully I'll, I'll, I'll tag into all those. Because that, that makes sense there. Most of us bought property in the area due to the fact it is low-density. At ten years here, I'm probably one of the newer people here. Other people have been here and raised their kids, and their kids have gone on and graduated and stuff. So when we purchased the property, it was for a lower-density, quieter zone, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-five units with balconies with the noise carrying up the hill on a regular evening when we can already hear Franklin Street is gonna be quite a bit of noise pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana, could you please say your name and address for the?
Yeah, that's okay. I'm Pitstick, Diana Pitstick, four oh five Hill Street.
Okay, thank you. And just to reiterate too about the, the public hearing that we'll have, when you, when you have these comments as well in January, you'll be able to talk about those again on January 13th.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna mute you. And then next I have Bill Meeker is raising his hand. We'll unmute you, Bill, and I'll try to start your video. Jim or John, did you have any comments about?
I thought it'd be best just to kind of have everyone run through with each topic, and then we can kind of bring up any response after that.
That's probably the most efficient. All right, thanks. Hi, Bill.
Hi there. We've met before, Matt. I'm Bill Meeker. I, I have my husband Bob Richardson own and reside at the property of four eighteen Elk Street. We bought the home nearly two years ago, and started living there half of the year. Right now I'm in California where it's warmer and less snowing. Anyway, as a little background, I'm a forty-year city planner, retired from city planning a little over two years ago. I've also administered some preservation programs for cities in California. So I have a great deal of understanding of what's going on here. That said, with respect to the density, in planning lingo, this almost appears like spot zone to put such a high-density development in, in the midst of a single-family-only neighborhood. So my concern is, I shared Ms. Pitstick's concerns about the, the impact of the proposed density on the, on the single-family neighborhood and on the quiet well-being of the neighborhood. I understand you're doing a planned development, which does allow you a lot more latitude, and since you're dealing with historic property, you're dealing with an adaptive reuse of a historic building. So that does give you a bit more latitude, but I do believe that the density is far too high, considering its location in the midst of a neighborhood currently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I see one other hand up. All right, thanks, Bill. Did you need a, is it, you're, you're good there? Dan and Kathy Harms. Trying to get you going.
I think we're up and going.
All right, there we are.
Okay. Can you, Kathy did something to the computer. I have a couple of comments in this density section, and in, first of all, I agree that with the previous speakers, that going with this high a density, that's a, a pretty terrific jump in a residential area. And regarding that, I refer back to the developer's presentation where he gave some examples of rental units and sizes. And these apparently are one-bedroom apartments, but several of his examples that he gave were for a single parent and children, or even a family. And so I do not see these apartments being appropriate for, for children and family being one bedroom. That's one comment. Second comment is part of the density mapping in the development. You deal with the setbacks, and there's a request for a variance in there. To go from a ten-foot setback to a five-foot setback, which as will be landscaped. As a landscaper and working on a lot of these projects, a five-foot stretch next to a retaining wall essentially will be a gravel area, which is not an attractive part of a neighborhood. So I'm objecting to that idea of a reduction of ten to five feet. The other thing in this area, and maybe I, maybe I should wait for the next section on traffic. Matt, I forgot a comment there, so I'll wait.
Yep, that'll be fine. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Does, I don't see any other hands up. Does anybody else want to speak about density? If you want to unmute your screen and just let us know, please verbally, then we'll, we'll turn your video on.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, could you say your name and address, please?
Carmen Nichols Alonso. Four eighteen Franklin. So I disagree with the other previous comments about the density. I have concerns that it's maybe too many units. Parking overflow, you know, that's, there's thirty-nine proposed spots, but if a family has more than one vehicle, then that's probably gonna be parking on Franklin. Church is held Saturday afternoon and Sunday mornings, and there's, Franklin is full of cars during those times for church. So I just have concerns, and I share the same concerns as the previous comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak about density?
Matt, can you hear me?
Hendrika?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want your video on?
No, I can't.
Okay, no problem. Could you say your, your full name and your address, please, Hendrika?
Hendrika Regatz, eleven seven zero three West Red Gates Road. I also agree with this previous speakers on other density concerns, and I believe that we should look at mixed developments in, in the, in the city, and maybe the, they can find some other properties to put up more housing units. And I really want to thank them also for developing the St. Mary's Church. Thank you.
Thanks, Hendrika.
Would anyone else care to speak about the density? I have Eddie Wagner. I'm gonna unmute you.
Hi. I'm actually April Wagner. I live at three forty-two. It's okay, my nickname is eighty. I live at three forty-two Franklin Streets on that last little house on the picture, and I have concerns, I guess I don't, yeah, I have concerns that kind of fit in with all of these things, primarily with runoff, and and that hill collapses regularly. There's a lot of unsettling and, and resettling, and so just kind of concerned with what would happen. And we're talking about a long construction period as well, and so, you know, we had that flood, I think it was in two thousand fifteen, that, that flash flooding that we got all those inches, and I, I think maybe, you know, a building equipment would have been in, in my house from that hill during that flood. So I'm concerned about that. I am also concerned about the, the density. And again, what they said about service workers, because most of the service workers I know have families. They are, they are family people, and so one-bedroom units don't seem like they would fit. So I am confused about that. And I live right across from the McCoy, which I understand is different, because this would be purchasing. Am I correct in that? No, it would be rental?
Rental.
Okay, so I, I am a little concerned about kind of living between those two. I, I want people to have affordable housing. But I also know what goes on across the street, and, and that makes it really difficult to have family homes here. Although I am in favor of family homes instead of Airbnbs, so I definitely want my kids to have neighborhood friends, which we don't right now. We have second homers. So those are my concerns, and, and my density concerns kind of fall into all of, all of those these subsequent agenda items you have listed.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else care to speak?
Hi, Matt. This is Amy Alderman. I apologize, I don't have the raise hand function.
No problem. I'll try to start your video if you, if you care to. Otherwise, you can go ahead.
Either way.
There we go.
Hi. I live at three fourteen Elk Street, so my house is one of the three models up on Elk Street looking down at the proposed development. I'm not going to rattle on too long. I just wanted to chime in and say that I do agree with the concerns of some of the people who spoke previously regarding density. That's a lot of, a lot of apartments to build in what's now a forest grove right below us. So I'm not going to add a whole lot new. I just wanted to say that I agree with the previous comments.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who cares to speak? Give it a couple of seconds here. All right, Jim and John, if you have any, any of those concerns, we can go ahead.
Yeah, just to, to move things along, I guess, just a few things. The example that I gave with all the, the different income levels, that was just as a example. That wasn't sitting here saying, we're gonna have three people in one-bedroom unit. Obviously, that doesn't make any sense. This was just so people could gauge, I guess, what the income bracket is for our units, you know, with, with them being one-bedroom units, you know, we're looking probably single people or maybe someone who has one kid. And, and while I mentioned targeting the service workers, this isn't strictly being built for service workers, you know, this is really for anyone who can, you know, be eligible within the, the certain income bracket. And so, you know, we obviously heard about the need for, for the rental housing for the folks who, who are service workers because of the Airbnb downtown, but certainly, you know, this is going to be made available for everyone. And obviously, we we're well aware of, you know, density within residential areas. And honestly, the the amount of units that we have is, is because of what I alluded to earlier with, you know, the economies of scale. If we, I mean, the project just doesn't work for us with just doing eleven units, and you know, unfortunately, when you're applying for the certain tax credits that we need, we can't have buildings or projects scattered all around town because there are certain things that we have to do, you know, in order to get funding, you have to be within a certain area of, you know, pharmacy or grocery store or, you know, a school. And so there's a lot of criteria that we have to hit, and so you know, while we're applying for this, this PUD, it's, it's really because we're right next to each other, and we've already done some preliminary mapping of what works based on the certain amenities that are in the, in the area. So if we're looking at doing, you know, twelve- So if we're looking at doing, you know, 12 units of new construction, 23 units total just just isn't going to work with, you know, what the the credits that we're looking to achieve. And we're trying to go as small as we can to, one, to be respectful of all of your guys' comments. And then, two, to make sure this is something that can get done. So as, you know, we're obviously very interested in preserving the school, but the new construction is needed to get the project done.
Okay, Jim, did you have anything? We'll move on.
No, I think, no, I didn't have anything else there.
Okay. All right, the next subject on the agenda is transportation related. So if you have any comments tonight about transportation, some of those topics include trip generation, which is something you look at with transportation engineering and how many daily trips are generated by a dwelling unit. And that would tie in with how many people are coming and going from there, which we alluded to earlier. Another thing is traffic circulation. It would be how people are entering and exiting the sites. And also parking, I know we've had some concerns about the proposed parking. So if you would like to speak on any of those topics or anything else related to transportation, please raise your hand and we can we can start that discussion. Yeah, Dan and Kathy Harms, I'm gonna start with you.
All right, I'm just.
You can just say your name, I've already did the address. Thanks.
Just for the record, Dan Harms, 308 Elk Street.
Thank you.
All right.
It'll help me when I'm typing this later.
Right. My my primary concern is looking at the presented map or preliminary plan that I see. The Hill Street extension above the Elk Street by St. Mary's School is shown as one lane. It's not as shown as a two lane. And I realize this is a preliminary plan, but preliminary should probably give a good representation of what might happen. That's a significant engineering feat and to widen that. However, I do not think you will gain emergency vehicle access or good access by keeping that a one lane street there. I think that's a real problem to look at that. It's actually passable now with emergency trucks and stuff as almost an alley. So it can be done, you aren't gaining anything there.
Dan, can I interrupt on that real quick? We were thinking that that there's a possibility that that may just be a one way up. So so we talked to the city. So it may not be, that little section may not be two ways.
So you're saying that then all of the traffic from these new units would dump onto Franklin Street?
Go down to Franklin Street. That that we think that's the we think that's what they would do anyway, because that's the, you know, that's the the route that you think most people would take, they would go down to Franklin Street, yeah.
Okay, that is the concern I have with with traffic is that I think that as far as the emergency access and adding to the infrastructure of the city, that would be a restriction that should be addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Dan, what will happen is the emergency vehicles will come up Franklin. And then and then would have to, you know, stop and do whatever they need to service either building and then head off and make that horrible. Maybe those trucks are better for it because they're they have more clearance. But that transition from Elk back down to High Street, that's probably, and and Matt, you could you could tell us as from the fire department's perspective, whether you think that's the loop that you would take.
I've gone over it with with another with one of the chiefs about how we would attack that if if this did go through. And our aerial truck would have to probably go up the highway and come up. And we would actually go backwards down that. And it would, we would go backwards down that one way, go the wrong way, which sounds bad, but it's very doable with a lights and sirens. And it's only, you know, 100 feet about that you gotta go down there. But we would then access in towards the new building from there or or go on to Elk by the school in order to reach it with the aerial. The other equipment could make it up there easier. But I would say having the High Street opened up between Franklin and Elk would be better for the fire department because right now it's difficult to make the corner to go up that outlet when we do have calls on that section of Elk Street between High and Dodge. So opening High would be a benefit to the to the apparatus. Okay, let's, are you good there, Dan?
I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Thank you. Bill Meeker, I'm gonna turn on your video.
Hi, Bill Meeker, 418, Bill Meeker, 418 Elk Street. I share Mr. Harms' concerns to a great degree. Additionally, in the letter that I submitted amongst our neighbors on in the 400 block of Elk Street for their December meeting, we expressed a number of concerns about traffic circulation in the area. You know, Elk Street, the 400 block is pretty much a one lane street with limited parking on it. And as this project is designed, most of the parking is accessed from the 400 block of Elk Street. And granted, I understand what you're saying, that there may be a tendency for people to go from Franklin up High Street to those parking areas. Once people become familiar, they will likely, as all of us in that block do, come off of Dodge Street. Granted, it's, once you know how to do it, it's fairly easy to do. It is a challenge, it's great, it is doable. I've done it many, many times. Additionally, we had concerns about the parking. And I understand that the parking is designed to meet city standards. However, even when you're talking about one bedroom units, you might have couples there that will have more than one car. Where's and are the excess cars going to go? Probably on Elk Street if you live in the old school building. And we have limited parking there as it is. Granted, we have an alley access behind people in our neighborhood, do use our garages, but we have very limited visitor parking. So we're very concerned about the assumptions that Elk Street is really not going to be used by any of the residents. I think that would warrant more study by a traffic engineer, some traffic analysis. It does look a little more deeply into the circulation patterns in the area and what the true parking demand may be. I would hope as part of the consideration for the planned development that you're giving special dispensation by allowing that. And that does give you the opportunity to perhaps impose some greater standards to a degree based upon the other dispensations that you're that you're providing. So I don't know if you could look at some mitigations relative to parking and circulation in the area that would relieve impacts upon the 400 block of Elk. Additionally, we did have concerns about any lighting, additional lighting in the area, which obviously if you're gonna have parking lots off of Elk Street, it's fairly dark, you're probably gonna add lighting, and that's going to negatively impact the atmosphere of our neighborhood as well, which is why most of us live there is due to its secluded nature and lack of traffic. And it's it's like you're feeling like you're out in the country when you live there. And we really hate to have that impacted by this development. And we do understand the need for more affordable housing for our workers in town. We just think this is not necessarily the best location for it. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Real quick, Matt, I want to interject here. So when I was talking about the property management and the income certification, so that's for the total household income. So if if it was a, you know, married couple or boyfriend and girlfriend, they would have to be at or below the $32,000 mark. And so that's going to be very unlikely in this project with them being one bedroom units. And so we don't see there being more than one car per unit. Because generally, even when you do have a married couple, in our experience, and it could be different elsewhere, in our experiences is when you do have, you know, potentially lower income brackets, like within that realm, some people even share a car. So we're not anticipating these units having more than than one parking space per unit.
My concern, my concern in response to his comment is that they're all assumptions. I also, in addition to being a former city planner, I'm a former asset manager for an affordable housing developer. So I know how the funding works, I don't know the qualifying people works, I used to have to qualify people as well. So I do understand that. I, again, it's just assumptions you're making. I think there are possibilities that you may have one more, more than one car per household. That's not saying it's likely to happen, but it's saying that it's a possibility that I think should be looked at further.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Diana, I'm gonna put you on next.
Hi. Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, and I can't get my video to work, I've been trying. I do agree with both gentlemen, Mr. Meeker and Mr. Harms. I'm gonna read what I typed because then I don't have to think about what I'm trying to say. My comments in the letter I had previously written, commenting on the nightlight pollution as well as the noise pollution. The increased, not decreased, amount of traffic that would come to an already high traffic set of intersections. The intersection coming from Elk up to High and Hill has no traffic stop. And cars come rapidly uphill and around the corner. When the file's fire signal rings, an increase of high speed traffic proceeds down to the station, fire station. This would not be altered by opening High Street to Franklin. The problematic junction, again, at the lower intersection where a single lane of traffic, as Mr. Harms pointed out, comes up to a steep grade from Elk up to High Street with no traffic stop at an already reduced lane width. Traffic proceeding downhill on High Street towards Elk must then cross over while cars are coming up from behind a curve with no visibility. While it suggested most traffic would use the connection at Franklin Street as an egress, as Ms. Wagner pointed out, the the narrow, already congested traffic currently on for the Franklin Street area and intersection with with the resumption of church attendance especially would seem prone to traffic connecting up to High and Hill, making a left hand turn, a crossover to the 400 block of Elk Street, or taking a shortcut through the alley that exists between High and Dodge Streets. And again, while proposed parking is 39 for a 35 unit development with the basis of one car per one bedroom plus visitors, the reality of most populations these days, as evidenced by units of people living on Bent Street or other areas, is there are two adult workers and often two vehicles. It would not address the city's goal number three of address downtown parking issues, as it would not alleviate issues with tourist customer parking. At High and Hill Street, already even in this reduced work hours, we have regular workers who park their cars and travel downhill on a daily basis. Because my neighbor or my husband will say, what's that red car? And I go, that's the guy who works at a restaurant someplace, you'll see him come back at 11 o'clock tonight carrying his stuff. The tourists also park up there. They come when there's high visitation areas, we're parked from one end of the block to the other. So again, as Mr. Meeks pointed out, where is all this additional parking going to go? Thank you. Diana Fitzdick, 405 Hill Street.
All right, thank you. All right, Rick Paris here, I'll put you on next. Can you hear us, Rick? Hello, Rick?
Do you have your own device on mute?
I have them unmuted.
Okay.
Rick, if you do want to speak, I'm gonna move on to the next, oh, there he is.
There he is.
All right.
But he is muted, though.
All right, I'm gonna unmute you, hold on. There you go.
No.
I can't hear him.
I don't hear you yet. Is your microphone on your device on?
Oh.
I can't I can't hear you. If you wanna if you wanna try again after the next one, we'll we'll try to get you. Otherwise, you might be able to call into the phone number for the Zoom meeting is on the website as well. We can try it that way. All right, thank you. All right. Amy Alderman wants to speak, so I'm gonna try to find her. Amy, I think you're on.
Hi, Amy Alderman, 314 Elk Street. Regarding transportation, I just wanted to say that as it is right now, Elk Street is a danger to cross as a pedestrian and as a driver. Every time I drive Elk Street, I basically say a little prayer as I come around the bend because I know there might be a car coming the other way that's drifting off to the middle of the street. It's a frightening place to drive on a daily basis at any time of the day. And these days especially, I take my six year old daughter for walks. And it is it is also scary to cross Elk Street to go down to the 400 block of Elk Street because of the same reasons. So I can't, while I am very glad to see that this development is taking shape at St. Mary's, and I thank you for your work on that, I have major concerns about the transportation that will increase in this area. I always say safety first, and I know that's at the forefront of your minds. But this is a real concern of mine and the top concern of mine for this project overall.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, Larry Antero, get to next.
Hi, this is Tara Campo, 321 Hill Street, the corner of Hill Street and and High Street. The High Street connectivity is, I believe, my biggest concern, as well as some of the folks that have spoke earlier. One thing that I think is not, hasn't been said, I don't want to repeat all the things that have been said, is that we're not considering people who are not part of our community. We're talking about how we would all change our habits for this intersection. But I'd like to point out that as soon as these addresses are put in to be living spaces, Google Maps and all the GPSs around the world are gonna know that High Street goes through. And this is now going to be the shortest point between two places, between Highway 20, Spring Street and Franklin. Instead of it being Dodge, Google Maps is not gonna know the difference. It's going to be High Street is the closest way to get from point A to point B. And I think that is going to bring a lot of traffic that doesn't know why they should be going in a different direction. Doesn't know about the strange intersection at Elk and High, doesn't know about not stopping at High Street and Hill Street, doesn't know about the two intersecting alleys. They're gonna go down the street, they're not gonna know that literally, you know, down near Mr. Parisers' house, it practically goes to a one lane. This is not a thoroughfare like Dodge Street, but Google Maps isn't gonna know the difference. And people coming to Galena, the 1.4 million tourists that come to Galena, aren't gonna know the difference. So it's going to be the shortcut whether we want it to be or not. And I find that a very disturbing fact that is kind of getting missed in talking about the development itself and the building itself. So I just wanted to put that on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Okay. Is there anyone else who care to speak about transportation? I wanted to ask Bill Meeker if I could put you back on just for a moment, please. Bill, Emma Jane, your neighbor there wanted to make sure the points were covered tonight about transportation from her aspect. And I know you guys have a letter together. And I know you guys have a letter together that you may want to present again at the public hearing. Did we cover every concern that she had?
I believe so. And you do plan to resubmit that for the next hearing, assuming it would be carried over from the last hearing. I mentioned the, for a branch of traffic study of the area parking analysis, concerns about traffic circulation in the area, I believe we've covered everything.
Okay, thank you very much. She wrote me and asked me to make sure we covered her stuff, and, because she couldn't make it tonight, so.
Oh, I probably have a text from her as well.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we got it, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see any other, hands up if anybody that can't raise their hand, wants to unmute yourself. We'll give you a couple of seconds. Otherwise, we'll, we'll give Jim or John a chance to make any discussion, and then we'll move on. Okay, I don't hear anybody, so, Jim or John, do you wanna say?
Yeah, you know, before the call, one of the things that we obviously talked about was the, the traffic and the safety. And so, one of the things that we always try to do whenever we go into a new community, you know, as I alluded to, we, we have a lot of projects in Rock Island, but we do have a lot of projects in rural areas too, is we want to work with the city to figure out what's the best solution for these types of conversations. You know, we, we obviously don't want to bring a lot of light to the area, just because we understand that, you know, privacy is a big thing and people enjoy, I guess, the location of where they're at. But, you know, if there's a way to present some lighting that provides a little more safety to, you know, walking pedestrians, that's something we're willing to work with, with the city. And then when it comes to traffic, you know, if the city engineer has a suggestion of a better way to keep the flow of traffic moving in a certain direction or more safe. I know Jim and I, we talked about, you know, some sort, not really a speed bump or a gate or something we can put up, I guess, that, you know, makes it only allowable for people who live there, you know. So we're, we're already talking about these kinds of things, and we do value your input here. And I think, you know, hopefully, as the project continues to move along, we can work with, you know, your elected officials who can give us better inputs, and then we can follow, you know, their guidelines. You know, we don't, we don't know the ins and outs of that area as well as you guys do. I mean, you live there, you drive it every day, but we want to make sure that we make it as easy and safe for you as possible.
Thanks, Jim. Jim, did you wanna add anything?
Oh, I think that's right, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move from transportation on to development standards. This would be a good point in time if you, if you have any comments or concerns that you want to share with the applicant regarding any of those things listed on the agenda, such as historic appropriateness, compatibility with the neighborhood, which we've kind of covered some of that with the density and transportation. Any nuisances, again, with lighting or noise, concerns that you have with those. I will say with, like, the landscaping and buffer yards and lighting, we do have a pretty extensive ordinance for that in our zoning ordinances. So we do have standards with respect to adjacent properties and things like that as well. But if you have any comments or concerns about that, please share them. Stormwater, we've, we've heard from April about her concerns with the stormwater there. We do have stormwater design and ordinances in effect that would address some of those as well. If anybody has any other knowledge.
Real, real quick, yeah. Real quick, Matt, I know, you know, Jim would obviously be working extensively with the civil engineer just to go through the, the different elevations within that area. You know, obviously, we have a very steep runoff. And, and, you know, I guess to allude to the whole noise and light, you know, it's my understanding that there's a significant wooded area, and Jim, you can correct me here, but we do think that the wooded area will, will definitely help in parts of the area that surrounds it as far as the lighting and the noise. But we do have, you know, firms that we work with on the civil engineering side, just to make sure there are no issues with that runoff. You know, obviously, there's, there's issues whenever you kind of get into construction. But, you know, we, Jim, we've had countless conversations with our primer project on elevation changes that are nowhere near the slope of this one. So it's, it's something that, going back to the same thing with, you know, dealing with the transportation, working with the, with the city staff, is, is we're gonna work with you guys to provide us the guidance that we need to get done and get it done correctly.
Yeah, with respect to stormwater, I suspect we'll be doing onsite detention, and it probably will be perhaps even underground, under the, the new parking lots, you know. And we've done those kinds of structures before, and they do tend to see to work pretty well. In terms of the landscaping, a good point about, you know, Dan Harms was talking about the side yard at five feet. And he's right about that. I think, you know, I think we're, we're gonna be able to increase that five-foot side yard setback to at least 10 to accommodate what we need to do. And I think at this point, is that we were in this preliminary design phase, when I start tightening up the, the design of the building, I think I'll realize that the building's actually gonna shrink a little bit. And maybe, you know, you know, a, a good amount that'll allow us to restore our side yards. With respect to the up and down, especially behind the rear yard, which is facing upper Elk, right now is a very densely wooded area. Our goal is not to change that at all. As a matter of fact, we're, we're talking about building a small terrace there, just behind the building, where we would go ahead and enhance that buffer between Elk, upper Elk and, and the building itself. So I think there's gonna be, there's plenty of, of, of room between the back of the building, or I should say, the, the retaining wall at the back of the building up to Elk Street, where we're gonna be able to provide, you know, a significant amount of, of buffer there through landscaping. So I'm, I'm feeling very confident about that. And then with respect to historic appropriateness and compatibility, I think that, again, you know, will, those are those discussions as a designer, right? You know, the thing you look forward to is literally getting down into the weeds to start designing this thing. At this point, what we're, what we have done is created a, a, a sort of a glorified, you know, sketch. But knowing that the building that I've outlined is a, a pretty close to what the final building size would be from a bulk standard, but not necessarily at all from a detail and pattern and material standard. And so, and we will take a, we will be getting a shot at that, hopefully, you know, as we move forward to, to come up with a design that is the perfect design for that location.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up if you, if you want to raise your hands, and if you have any comments about those, those topics with development standards, we'll go through that as well. Bill, I'll unmute you and turn your video on, Bill Meeker.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to repeat some of the things I've already said, but I will just comment again on the appropriateness of the density for the area. I do feel, again, that it's akin to spot zooming. I understand the need for affordable housing again for the workers in town, but I don't think this is the best location, given the site constraints, grade, accessibility via street, parking, et cetera. Additionally, on the historic side of it, I'm hopeful, and the architect did, did indicate reference to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Structures. And I am going to trust that the restoration of the St. Mary's School building proper will be sensitive and retain all the historic character aspects of that building. And my hope is that the new building, while not being duplicative of the St. Mary's School, does contain elements of that historic style in the new building as well. As I'm sure you all know, historic rehabilitation, variability of historic structures, it is not to duplicate the building and the new structure, but to pay deference to the architectural features that made that historic building historic in it is. And that's through use of materials, massing, et cetera. So I'll be watching that as we move along too, if this project does move forward. That's it.
Yeah, well, and Bill, with, with respect to the, the St. Mary's, the restoration and rehab of St. Mary's, you know, that's, that's pretty much prescribed. You know, if you're, if you're, if you're gonna be going in for historic preservation tax credits, which are administered by the state, and, and the tax credits are through the federal government, through the Park Service, then the, the stuff that they do is very intense. And, and, and they will, you know, it, it adds a significant amount of money to the project, what they require us to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm a preservationist at heart, but we would want to do that anyway. And, and, and so, but just, you know, it just, you just, people just need to know that when you do it in that, with that sort of attention to detail and, and integrity, you know, it's respecting the integrity of the original building, it's a very expensive proposition.
No, I do understand that. I've worked on the planning side of it, helping developers go through the process. So I do understand that.
Yeah.
It is a significant additional cost, which makes it interesting to show the builders that require so much rehabilitation going into it.
And the other thing, there was some talk about lighting, I should have mentioned it. We, you know, I'm a dark skies person. You know, anything that we do when we, when we specify lighting is all low-cut-off lighting. It's as low a poles as you can do, bollards. I mean, we're talking about, yeah, there, there is, there's, we're not gonna try to make this look like the Walmart parking lot up there. It's, it's gonna be, you know, we're extremely, you know, we live in this town. We, you know, my wife and I lived here for 32 years. We're very sensitive to all of those issues, and, and lighting in particular. And we're, there's just, you know, there's no way we're gonna let this thing end up looking like, you know, a gas station or something. We, we, we'll just keep it as low and as sensitive as possible. And as, and as long as we are meeting, you know, certain safety standards, that's what we need to do. But we'll do it in the most creative and, and certainly in the, with the, with the least amount of impact.
And I assume that the design of the lighting for the sites and such will be included in the final design for the project? So we'll all be able to see how the lighting is being designed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It will include studies of, of lighting glare onto adjacent properties. I understand what you're saying with controlling it onto the property, but I would be hopeful that there'd be some studies that demonstrate for those of us in the affected neighborhood that showed that there will not be light sleeping onto our properties.
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, we can definitely do that. I mean, we sometimes do that, and sometimes we don't do that. And I think in this situation, there's a, there's an added, you know, compunction to want to do it because of how close we are to other people, so.
I can say to the, to the ordinance requirements that we do have foot candle requirements, and we do, on larger developments, require a photometric plan that shows the fried egg pattern underneath the lights to demonstrate that it doesn't spill over into adjacent properties.
Yeah, we have Bonnie Garrity.
We'll ask for that from the city.
Is Bonnie Garrity still doing the night skies?
I think so.
In Galena, yeah, and she's a, quite an advocate, so she's one of the people we want to make happy too, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, Diana, I have you up next, Diana Pitts-Dick.
Hello?
Okay, we got you.
Hi, I'm Diana Pitts-Dick, 405 Hill Street. Regarding runoff, I agree with Ms. Wagner again on that issue. It took us multiple years of working with city engineering to get them to partially enclose the stormwater drain that dumped into our ravine. It now goes halfway through the yard and dumps halfway out through the yard. Just volumes and volumes of water come out of there. It comes spilling out. It makes a mess, it drags everything downstream with it. It's a constant maintenance issue. It then proceeds to cross over the top of the alley, dump down into Hartman's property, next to Digman's property, cutting across two other properties to go where that 11-space parking lot would be in the old parking lot that's part of the school, which is then gonna keep traveling downhill. So there's quite a bit of runoff issues there. In addition to the runoff that comes downhill street, sorry, High Street, and routinely takes out the parking area in front of the, the Linen's house, takes the gravel, just takes it right on down the hill. So incredible amounts of runoff issues. And also had additional issues with the buffering. It's good to know that you might increase it and do some more on Elk Street, where the top of that roof looks like it'll be almost level with Elk Street itself. So those are my, my comments on that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, Dan and Kathy Harms.
Dan Harms and Kathy, 308 Elk Street. I have several areas here, and I, I appreciate, Jim, that this is a concept drawing only. However, I, if, you know, sketches frequently turn into realist, realism, so I have some concerns about the building that's shown. I am very much aware of that we don't want to do new construction to mimic historical construction. That's not how it's done. And I think it's interesting, and I have great faith in your ability to take the old Mary's, St. Mary's School and rehab it and restore it in a historic manner, and yet that's only 30% of the project. So 60% of the project is the new building, and so I have some concerns about that. You mentioned the roof, and we've got historic appropriateness on the agenda and compatibility in the same, you know, it's the next two, they're right together, and they really cannot be pulled apart. What we have with St. Mary's School, St. Mary's Church, are two large institutional buildings surrounded by residential buildings. And what you're adding is a third, high-density, and it'll have the bulk of those institutional buildings. So it must be compatible. And I'm worried about the footprint that you have, which is a pretty busy footprint in opposition to the simplicity and straight walls of the others. I'm worried about the balconies that are on it, because we see no similar element like that in institutional or large bulk buildings in the community outside of Main Street buildings. And I think the roof has to be compatible with the existing buildings. There, the only other one that exists is McCoy Manor. And, you know, building a new building doesn't mean you have to repeat the mistakes of past. I mentioned before the buffer yard and the distance there, and tightening that up, and it just makes really cumbersome areas there. I think that it, and I applaud the idea of keeping the buffer between Elk Street and the building. I think that if you put that kind of construction in, you're going to have to replace it all, because most of those trees are pretty weedy, and the only thing that keeps them going as they die back is the new ones growing real fast, so that has to be approached. I have some, there are massive retaining walls there, and there's a tendency, when we get into budgeting and things like that, to go with the newer materials. I would hope that they would stay with limestone to be compatible with the other walls that we have here in the community, and particularly in this neighborhood. The last comment I have is on the stormwater because I would like to at least see some preliminary on that. Jim, it's going to be interesting. Uh, you said maybe under the parking, you realize the parking is higher than your, uh, bottom floor. So that'll be an interesting project. So those are my concerns and thank you very much.
That's why we have really good engineers, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, um, next, uh, Ms. Wagner.
Hi, my name is April Wagner, 342 Franklin Street. And, um, again, I think my, my overarching statement is that it, because we've lived here now for 12 years. And, and this is the second time a development has been proposed. And I appreciate that this one is from a nonprofit with an Idaho affordable housing. Those were things we not, we did not see before. But in both cases, it appears to me that, like you said, in order to save the St. Mary's School building, you have to do these new builds. Because otherwise there's no way you can finance it or even justify the cost. And, um, my family and I, we take regular walks through there. All up and down Elk Street, I agree with Ms. Alderman that that area is terrifying to drive on, to walk on. It, in its, in and of itself, that should be fixed regardless of what happens. That area is scary. And also we joke about Franklin Street being, uh, Franklin River whenever it rains. I mean, any kind of, anything more than a, a little mist is bringing down rock debris. It, it is dangerous on, on Franklin Street and you're going to have just more of that. You know, so I, I don't know, and I'm not an engineer. So I, I have a really hard time visualizing this too because I'm thinking I can watch my kids run to the end of this property and back through the woods. And it doesn't seem like you could fit that apartment building in there. Um, but I realize I don't have that kind of vision. But, but to me, I just, it seems to me that we're going to a lot of effort and maybe compromising both the current residence and future residence quality of life just to save this building. And I recognize that it was an important building in the community. I appreciate, I have had to work with the historical, um, council as well, even though my house has, like, no one cares really. It's just a date. No famous person lived here. No, you know, but I still have had to go to added expense to make things look the way that they want them to look. Um, and so I appreciate that, but I, I would rather see something in our community happen along the lines of moving the St. Mary's property or salvaging what can be salvaged and reusing it somewhere else. And we are daily watching that building fall into more and more and more disrepair. And in the 12 years I have been able to see the decay happening and there is less and less and less to save. Less and less that's reusable. And I just, I would hate for our community to get stuck in that. I think history is a, is an important part, you know, the town, the time forgot. Sometimes that can be a bad thing. And I, I would just, I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling to see, um, again, this high density be, be an improvement in the quality of life in Galena for its residents and its visitors. Um, and I would hate for that to be the expense we pay in order to save this building. And I realize that's also, you know, something for the foundation to hear, but I, that's just my concern. I, I, I just don't see why we should really, um, sacrifice our lives to get this building saved. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Rick Paris, are we going to try you again?
There he is.
We still, still can't hear your audio.
He call in?
Yeah, he can call in. There's, there's a call-in instruction.
There should be a call-in instruction.
Rick, do you want to, um, can you call from your cell phone, uh, the City Hall? I'll, I'll pick it up.
Matt, this is Hendrick. I have a couple of questions.
Okay. If, Hendrick, I'm going to see if Rick's calling in real quick and then, uh, I'll have you speak after him, please.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hello, Rick?
Yes, this is me.
All right. Rick, I'm sorry. Could you, could you put your, um, computer on mute, please? Or on, turn your speaker off on the computer?
Get a little feedback loop there.
Okay.
Yes, sorry to everyone. I, I guess I've got several comments, but first of all, I want to thank, uh, John David Schu for, for arranging this for us. I don't remember any time, uh, in the past that we've had an opportunity to do this. And, uh, I'm finding it very enlightening. I do have a question on the whole project. First of all, uh, the, the nomination of, identifying this as the St. Mary's Preservation Project is sort of misleading. It is not, uh, just the St. Mary's School. It's, it's overwhelmed, as Dan Harms mentioned, uh, by the other building, the multi-story apartment building. But, uh, just a simple question and, uh, perhaps, uh, John, maybe you can answer this. Uh, this project encompasses three separate legal parcels lots. Why does the multi-story building have to be adjoining the school? Is, is that necessary in, in order to qualify for tax credits? Well, I'll leave that with you and I'd appreciate a response. And by the way, my address is 113 South High, which is about, oh, five, six hundred feet from the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Did you have any, sorry, I can make you hung up. Okay.
I can, once he gets back at his computer, I can, um, answer his question if he can hear me. Hey, Rick, can you hear me okay? Will you nod if you can hear me? Okay. Yeah. So, um, I don't want to get into the weeds of things too much because it does get a little confusing. But when you apply for certain tax credits, uh, through Ida, so Illinois Housing Development Authority, they have scoring sections that you have to meet certain criteria for. And one of the scoring sections is amenities that are nearby. And so when you have projects with buildings that are kind of scattered all over the place, they're going to look at the, the proximity of those amenities based on both buildings, right? So with us, the importance here is to essentially have, um, an area where the buildings are being treated as connected. Because then, you know, your proximity to, as I alluded to earlier, a, a grocery store or a restaurant or, um, an education place or a hospital is the same. And so then we aren't dealing with, you know, maybe that's something five miles across town and we have to look at, well, which one's closer, you know, which one is this, which one is that? It kind of gets a little more difficult for us to apply for this, for the necessary funds. And, um, you know, these applications are very competitive, you know, the Ida's, uh, scoring is 100 points. And just to give you an example, this past year I applied for, we applied for funds in Arkansas and, uh, we literally missed the funds by one point. So every point when we send in an application matters. And, you know, the amenities piece, while it, it's important and, you know, you may think it's, it's easy. It can actually be quite difficult, especially when you're looking to try to redevelop something in a rural community. I hope that answered your question. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn your video off, Rick. Okay, um, anybody else with their hand up? I think Hendrika wanted to speak next, so we'll unmute Hendrika.
Thank you. Again, my address is 11703 West Red Gates Road. And I'm curious about, uh, if there are, will be any green building standards required by the grants or the city. And the other question is, we're talking about taking down trees and, um, they are not just good for stormwater retention. They have other purposes too. And will the developer compensate somehow for that? And I would like to offer help in finding properties that have amenities similar to this location. If they're willing to work on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, uh, I'll take this one back here too. So this actually, uh, Hendrika, thank you for your question because it kind of piggybacks off of what I was just getting to. With our, our Shimer College Phase Two project that we're currently submitting in January, one of the other, uh, scoring parts is actually due to the architectural amenities and everything that you're planning to put in the units and around the units. And so when you send in an application, you essentially have to pick from, um, a laundry list of items. And it's a, it's a nine-page document that we had to go through with Jim and his team to really look at, okay, what would make the most sense here in this community for this project? And so, um, just for example's sake, the, the Shimer College area, it's a large campus. So we thought, hey, walking path would be great. Oh, it has an arboretum. So maybe we do a community garden. And then it kind of does get to the point of, you know, green, um, standards. Well, obviously that gets a lot harder with the historic buildings. But now with potentially having a new construction piece tied to that, that is something that we can explore. And so yes, that is something we will be looking at. I don't know the answer to that right now, unfortunately. But, um, you know, that is a part of our application and that is something that Ida does look at when they're fielding these 50 applicants that, that come in. And so yes, that will be looked at.
Yeah, and one of the thoughts of the flat, having essentially a flat roof concept. Two things. Uh, one, uh, was it kind of killed two birds with one stone. One is it kept the profile low. The second is that we were thinking, are thinking of doing a green roof on that building. So that, that would be a vegetated roof. So that would help, um, clearly with our, um, you know, our water management issues. So, um, so that, that was, uh, that was one of the things. Now, we could do a sloped roof or partially sloped roof with a flat roof. There's, there's different ways to do things. Different tricks we can do. But, um, but again, I haven't had a chance to, to design the building in the way I would normally design it. I literally put that, that image together, uh, on a, together on a Saturday because we were, we thought we were in this accelerated schedule to get, um, to get in front of the zoning board. And so, um, I would be going through my normal design processes at some point, uh, of designing a building. And, 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 uh, you know, considering all of the variables and factors that I normally consider when I'm designing.
And I know, I know Dan's hand is raised here and I know he's probably, his wheels are spinning about the, the landscaping and the, you know, the architecture from that. And so this is very preliminary, uh, Dan. This is not something that we have settled upon yet. You know, this is another thing similar to the runoff that we're going to bring in along with the general contractor, whomever we select that hasn't been selected yet. Because, you know, we need to make sure the project's moving forward first. But, you know, also that's another conversation to have with the civil engineer of what they think can work best as, you know, as far as, you know, trees being in there and, and other landscaping and, you know, the, you know, other exterior amenities that we are looking to have in there. Obviously we're not going to have a ton given the limited space. But, you know, what can we have in there that would be beneficial to, to the projects and to the community? And so, um, you know, we'll give it a lot of thought and we're going to be asking for intake, excuse me, input from other members of the development team. It's just not something we've spent a lot of time on yet, but as we get further along in the process, that is something that that is discussed.
And I think we're going to have to in order to get the final development plan, right, Matt? I mean, yeah, that's a much more detailed submittal.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to let Dan speak here. Um, yes, we're at now is the preliminary phase. So then when we do get to the final development plan, that's where we would see most of that detail. And then when, um, conceptually that would get approved in the final development plan, when we get the actual construction, um, documents from the designers, we would review that against international building code. We would see the civil engineering on that site for stormwater detention. We would, um, ensure that our standards are met for stormwater detention, which is releasing it at a natural rate, you know, before it was developed. All of those details, the, um, soil and subsurface explorations would all go into consideration during the design phase by the structural, uh, you know, foundation engineering plans and all of that. That also gets reviewed after the final preliminary, or the final planned unit development phase. Dan, did you have a question about, your hand went up when you mentioned green roof?
I think, and, and, you know, I've worked in this community for a long time in this conservation and landscaping. And so I think people know that I appreciate and value that and it's what I, I, I really like doing. However, I think the community of Galena, and sitting here just thinking about it, the proposal on the table is to get, um, housing for the people that work on Main Street. The people that work on Main Street have those jobs because basically this community is known for its visual aspect as a historic community. So I think we have a, a, a conflict here, uh, potentially, uh, yes, environmentally, from the water standards and all that, the green roof. But from the industry that drives Galena, that keeps people coming back to Galena, we have to put a lot of weight on making historically compatible buildings. So we don't do a major change on the viewscapes that the people that drive this community's welfare come to see. So that's my comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else care to speak about development standards this time?
I have a, a question. I can't raise my hand. Sorry. This is Tara Campo, 321 Hill Street. For Mr. Davis Hofer, when, with regards to, you were talking about the amenities and the points earlier with Mr. Paris's question and locations near grocery stores and hospitals and schools. And I'm just wondering if any other locations in Galena have been considered by your company? Or if this is the only place that you've looked at? Because I would think that there are other places closer to groceries, hospitals and schools than this location.
Yeah. No, thank you for the question. So really, the St. Mary's School drove us to the project. And from that, we kind of looked at, well, how big would it be? And we kind of concluded that it would be 11 units. And we just, you know, we said, hey, we, we have to look at something that's a little more, you know, creates a little more economies of scale for us. And that's when we obviously came to the new construction. And so, no, we haven't looked at, at anything else in Galena yet because we were drawn to the, the St. Mary's School. And then when we do find a site, it's my job to essentially look at the Ida requirements to see where we would potentially score because, um, you know, if we're not going to score high enough, we're not going to get the funds. Um, and then the project's not going to be able to go through because unfortunately, you know, as Jim said early on, to, to get the rents to, you know, pay for the amount of construction is just going to be astronomical. Because unfortunately, you know, in the world we live in, it's not like those costs of, uh, it's not like the construction costs are going to be any less than what they are for a, a market rate developer. And so, no, we haven't really looked at anything. And so, no, we haven't really looked at anything else strictly because the St. Mary's School brought us here. But, you know, we obviously did do the Coatsworth Building a few years back and that was through Ida. And obviously, when we got the approval there, that was something that they looked at. Whenever you send in an application to Ida, one of the things that you have to fill out is, they actually have this giant spreadsheet with, it's probably 10 different tabs that I have to fully complete. And one of those tabs just talks about the location of the site. And, you know, it's everything from who's the alderman, who's the mayor, who's the, you know, the state senator in the area. And then it goes down to, you know, the different amenities. And you have to actually list the address, list the name, list the proximity. And so we're open to other Galena projects. This is just one that's caught our eye right now.
And does your company have to deal with a building that already exists? It's strictly a redevelopment process?
No, you know, we're open to new construction too. You know, we've done new construction and we're looking at new construction elsewhere. The only, the only reason that this one is new construction included with the redevelopment of the school is just to get to a point where it makes sense for us to get included. Because if it's just St. Mary's, you know, unfortunately, the amount of time and money that we spend into a project that won't have any revenue being generated for three years, just, you know, it doesn't work for our organization. Because these projects take so much longer with us being a non-for-profit and the funding sources that we have to get. Now, if we did these size projects, we'd be out of business, you know, it just, it doesn't work for us. So we're open to new construction, straight rehabilitation or the combo like we're looking at right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Tara. Okay, would anyone else care to speak at this time? Development standards or any other comments?
I have a question.
Okay, this is Carmen.
Yes, this is Carmen at 418 Franklin. So this is a question on landscaping and buffering. So I live in the old St. Mary's Hospital, front of the properties on Franklin, back of the properties on Elk. So I was, the proposed plan shows a gazebo in a common area that is adjacent to my property line. So I was wondering what type of buffer or fencing would be planned for that area? I have a pond on my property back there that I wouldn't want any children falling into. I don't have a fence back there right now because it's next, I live next to the church property.
Yeah, so kind of talking about earlier, you know, we haven't decided on what the interior or exterior amenities are going to be for the project. You know, unfortunately, we just, as Jim said, he put together the nice picture that we had on Saturday because we thought we were kind of running up to a deadline. And so when it comes to exterior amenities, we always try to look at, you know, as I alluded to with the colleges, what makes the most sense for the site and for the community? And if it, you know, does require fencing, then that's something we have to look into. If it doesn't, you know, if the gazebo is not the right fit, then the gazebo is not the right fit. You know, this was something that for us, just to kind of put together to see on the site so people could kind of see the size of things, the layout and so forth. And so nothing really has been decided on that matter right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Carmen, that's good for us to be aware of as well, to make sure we're cognizant of all these aspects with the neighbors. Jim or John, did you have any other?
I don't think so.
You want to cover, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes all of my topics on the agenda. Does anybody have anything else that we have not covered? This is the last chance to have that discussion with the applicant. I'm glad that we did this tonight because at a public hearing setting, we would not have been able to have this dialogue as easily, I don't think.
Matt, did you, there was the D part, I guess, did we really go over that? And?
I think we've kind of covered it as affordable housing.
Okay.
John, I didn't know if you want to add anything to that. I think you kind of covered the definition and the different tiers or?
Yeah, and it sounds like a lot of people kind of have a good concept of what we're doing. You know, unfortunately, we get into communities where there's a misconception of what affordable housing is. You know, a lot of people kind of correlate that with Section Eight housing and kind of run down areas. And unfortunately, that gets a bad rap, you know, that's obviously not what we're looking to do here. And that's kind of a, I guess, an easy way of showing that is through the picture that Jim put together. And then also, you know, I talked through the income levels of the people that we are potentially targeting. And so while it is called affordable housing, you know, these are just everyday folks that just need a place to live. You know, unfortunately, costs are going up, so therefore rents are going up. And so that's when developers like us can come in and, you know, try to provide the housing. But in order to do that, you know, we need the certain tax credits to get us there. And so, you know, we unfortunately face the apprehension of that misconception. And it sounds like a lot of people here really truly know the term affordable housing, so thank you for that.
Okay. All right, if no one has any, anything else, I think we'll go to my closing comments. Just to reiterate, we're in this preliminary phase of planned unit development, establishing the district standards for this site. And we're looking at density and conceptual development standards and things like that. If this does make it through the preliminary phase, then we move on to a final development phase, development plan, which will be reviewed with another public hearing at the zoning board level. And at that part of the phase, that part of the process, we will see the detailed site plan and the detailed building layouts and amenities and things like that, which will subsequently, if that is passed, will be under further scrutiny by the city staff when we're looking at construction drawings and we are looking at all of the engineering aspects, you know, for civil engineering, for building code, for historic appropriateness and all of those things. So thanks, everyone, for your time this evening. I hope it was helpful for both the applicant and the interested parties to have a better understanding about what this project is. And we look forward to the public hearing again on January 13th. It's the second Wednesday night of January and that will be at 6:30 PM again on Zoom Communications. Anybody have any last comments or we're gonna sign off?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I know a lot of the people that are listed and it's, and it's, it's, it's good to hear the people's concerns. And as usual, in Galena, we never, you know, people aren't apathetic. They come out and talk and that's one of the things I love about the place, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, you know, I really appreciate you guys taking the time here tonight to talk through this with us. You know, obviously, our usual process is to do this well beforehand. And we apologize that we were working under a schedule that we didn't think would allow us to do so. And so now that we're aware of, I guess, the next steps, I'm happy that we were able to kind of get together and talk. I wish we were in person, but I see the pandemic is here. And, you know, just want to thank you, if you guys have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to reach out, so thank you.
Thanks, John, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate you putting this together.
Yeah, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, happy new year, everybody.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
See you later.